Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Since we have no one to sing the Star Spangled Banner today, we will open our meeting. This is a bittersweet meeting for us because we have some transitioning going on in this meeting, but before we get to that, we're going to have a wonderful celebration of accomplishment that is going to be shared today about our Arboretum.
Arboretum.
Do it for me.
Arboretum.
Arboretum accreditation award and Bob Donahue, our PR director and Parks and Recreation Director, and Stacy Smith, the supervisor extraordinaire, will make that presentation today. Mr. Donahue?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Stacy Smith has been with the city for 34 years. He is a treasure. He is someone that we all love. Everybody loves Stacy, let's face it. He has worked at every, we were talking about it earlier because we all both came up together. Stacy has worked every area in the Parks Division that you can imagine, from routes to the tree crew to the nursery, on and on and on. And when I was Park Superintendent, I talked to Stacy and he took over Hollis Gardens. And it's just, it's a tremendous treasure for Lakeland. Again, Stacy and Pam Page were behind the city being named an arboretum. Stacy's going to tell you about it today and we'll all share his vision. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, thank you for having me here today. Let me talk about this. But during this tumultuous year of 2020, something good actually did happen from the Parks perspective. We were able to turn the city of Lakeland as a whole into an international arboretum. And we did that through a group called ArbNet. Now ArbNet is affiliated with the Morton Arboretum Group that has a listing of all the arboretum around the world. And there's a lot of big names on that list, including the city of Lakeland Arboretum. Some of those other names would be Kew in London, Kew Gardens, Gardens by the Bay in Singapore, Fairchild Garden down in Miami, the New York Botanical Garden. We're on a list with those people, but we're accredited. We're actually accredited as an international arboretum. If you're not sure what an arboretum is, it's a collection of trees or a museum of trees. And it's supposed to serve an educational purpose and a conservation purpose as well because a lot of the trees that you put into an arboretum are rare. Now, we've got a long history of planting trees in Lakeland. It goes all the way back to the beginning. In 1888, the Lakeland Parks, the Lakeland Park Association was, their job was to plant trees in the city park. We only had one park at the time. And eventually that park became Mumpark. So that's how it all started. And as we moved forward in time, this is a picture, a portrayal of City Hall in the 1930s. There's a large live oak in front of it with some Spanish moss. Traditionally, Massachusetts Avenue in front of City Hall has always been lined with live oaks. And we're keeping that tradition alive. The original trees are gone, but they have been replaced over the years. Our founders really thought about our lakes in Lakeland, and they made them public spaces. So you don't see houses on the lakes or private property on the lakes so much in Lakeland. Everyone has access to them. And that's an important thing when it comes to our international arboretum. But we've always had a tradition of planting palms and trees lining our lakes and in our parks. If we go into the 1950s, a fellow by the name of Bill Morlock became the Superintendent of the Parks Department. He was the first one. And he established the city nursery right next to Oak Hill Cemetery. It was 1956. And the nursery plays an important role in our arboretum. We're having to be really creative these days when we plant trees around Lakeland because there's so many diseases and problems that have come in over the years. So we can't necessarily plant what we used to plant. And some of the things that we're growing are really rare. You can't just go out and buy them. So the city nursery serves a role in growing those trees from seeds. We actually have to plan several years out. So there's streets downtown that will be getting trees in the next couple of years that have been growing at the city nursery. Another, he was, Bill Morlock, when he established the nursery, he was definitely a horticulturist. He was a member of the Orchid Society, the Rose Society, the Garden Club, and he was a member of the Beautification Board, along with the person that founded the Beautification Board, which was Peggy Brown. Now, she's a former mayor and commissioner, and she really pushed the city beautiful idea in Lakeland and the landscaping concept. In the 1980s, a fellow by the name of Gene Strickland decided to rebuild the city's infrastructure. The Lakeland Electric Administration Building behind me went up in 1990. This wing of City Hall was part of that renovation of the town. All the different departments got new offices and new buildings. There was a lot of landscaping going on at that time. And even today, we're still out there planting trees. This is our landscape crew. Trees and palms everywhere you look. Renovating buildings, the landscapes, the old landscapes, and adding to things that we haven't done before. So we've got a mature canopy in town, all over town, actually. And all we can do now is just add details because the foundation has been laid by everybody before us. So we've mapped out our downtown area. And as trees come down, if they're not the appropriate tree for that specific area, we've got something planned for that area that is more appropriate and that can handle those growing conditions a little bit better. So the transition should be smooth from this point on. That brings us to Lake Morton. Now, a while back, probably about 10, 10 years or so, Pam Page, Bill Cohen, Pam Page is our deputy director, Bill Cohen, our city horticulturist, and Brian Dick, our city arborist, decided to turn Lake Morton into the flowering trees of the world. So there was supposed to be a collection of flowering trees on that lake. And when you do, here recently, we decided to add more trees to that collection because hurricanes come through, freezes come through, and you lose things over the years. But when you do that, you have to label them. And the old way of labeling things was to put a metal tag out on a little post next to the tree with maybe a scientific name or a common name and maybe a country of origin because that's all you could really fit on a tag like that. But Brian Dick, the city arborist, decided, well, maybe we should do that digitally. And we got together with the GIS group and IT, and they mapped out all of the trees on Lake Morton. That allowed us to identify them and give a more complete description. So you have your scientific name, your common name, your country of origin, but also how tall the tree gets, how wide the tree gets, what USDA zone will it grow in, and then a description of that tree and what it was used for and the country that it came from. We also have an ability now to put a memorial at the end of that description. If someone wanted to donate a flowering tree to Lake Morton, we could put a little, this was donated by this person for this purpose, rather than putting a sign out there that might get damaged or disappear at some point. So it opens a lot of doors for us. If you want to look at the trees on the map, just go down to Lake Morton, you'll find a post with a sign on it and a QR code. And you can scan, you could probably do it in this room, actually, you can scan that code with your cellphone or an iPad, and it will bring you immediately to the history of Lake Morton. And/or if you're on the lake itself, it will take you to that first tree that you're standing next to. And you can tap on one of the tabs around the lake, and it will take you to the tree that you're standing in front of. And there's a picture of that actual tree that you're looking at. So when all this was done, we thought about it and, you know, what can we do? What can we do to make this a little bit better? So we contacted ArbNet. And they accredited us with that Level 1 accreditation because we met all the qualifications for becoming an arboretum, which meant that we had to have a minimum of 25 species in that collection. We had to have a governing board, which Pam Page is part of the governing board and management is. We had to have an arborist. They had to be labeled, and we did so digitally. There has to be a maintenance staff, which we have, and there has to be public access, which is where our founders come into play because they made all of that publicly accessible.
Cool.
Now, this is the accreditation we got. And we can actually take it further. There are several levels. There's four levels to the accreditation process. We're Level 1, and there's 232 of us worldwide. If we want to go to Level 2, we have to have 100 species and collections policy, and we have to kind of enhance our educational programs a little bit. Now, right now, we go around to different schools during the Arbor Day period and talk about trees and plant a tree. So we might have to tweak that a little bit, make it a little more important to become Level 2. But right Hollis Garden downtown has a huge collection of rare fruit trees, if you didn't know. There's about 60 to 70 species in that garden. And it doesn't seem like it because it's so small. They're going to take us to that next level. Level 3 requires 500 species, which we might be able to do with Lake Wire because Bill Cohen had put a palm tree collection on Lake Wire many, many years ago. And that will take us to the number of species that we need for Level 2. Now, we're going to have to get a conservator and a curator for some of these different levels that we're trying to attain. And scientists at some point within the city system will have to become part of it somehow. So there's a lot of things to figure out. But we think we can go all the way to Level 4. And worldwide, there are only 30 accredited botanical gardens that are Level 4. And remember, we're not a garden. We're a city. Now, as far as the local region, there are 35 accredited arboretum in Florida, and only one of them is a city. That's us. Worldwide, there's only about a half a dozen cities that have done this. So it puts us on a world map. And this is a real map. You can go to ArbNet's map and find all of the arboretum around the world. And there are some people that actually travel from country to country to visit all those various arboretum. So this is a real thing. And next in line is the Hollis Garden Fruit Tree Collection and the Lake Wire Palm Collection. And in the future, we're probably going to add Lake Crago to that list with all of the native trees that are growing in that area and some that we can add that will get us up to Level 4 and that 500 species that we have to have to attain that accreditation. But it was actually pretty easy to do this, at least the Level 1 part, because of what everyone had done prior to us. We had the foundation already laid for this. And it was very easy to get this accreditation. Does anyone have any questions? I have to thank, I have to thank the IT department, especially the GIS group and the IT department, of course, Parks and Recreation, and Kevin Cook's group because they took all the pictures and made everything look good for the website. But are there any questions about this?
Well, your comment is that it was easy to do because it had already been done. But you built on what had gotten started, and so that's great. Is the next group after flowering and native palms, native trees, is that the fourth?
The sequence will be Lake Morton, which is already established as a flowering tree collection. Hollis Garden will be the fruit tree collection. That's next. Then the palm collection on Lake Wire. And hopefully in the future, we can, we haven't, we're just kind of talking about it right now. We can do a native tree collection to Lake Crago.
Questions by Commissioners or comments. Commissioner Madden?
So I'm a big fan of the Lake Morton Arboretum. And I would encourage teachers and parents and clubs to do what I was able to do. We took one of our groups and met at the library and had, grabbed a coffee. And then we all went together, you know, through, and they're all numbered very easily. You just walk around the lake and can, you know, touch it and look at it and see the different, you know, flowers and pods and everything and all the trees. So I thought it was fantastic. I was so excited. So I hope a lot of people watching will sign their group, you know, your antique club, your PEO. We've had Stacy come to several of my groups to talk about a lot of things. But this is something that you can do on your own with your group, and it's just fantastic. Thank you so much, Stacy and Pam and the whole team. It's amazing.
Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. They're gonna, you guys have done a great job of having owned a tree. I used to be a tree farmer years ago. And I was never able to sell trees. I guess my trees weren't good enough to sell. I could get the landscapers to buy them, but the city was a little bit more tougher to deal with.
Discerning.
They wanted a better quality than I could grow. But, and I do, I know you all have a lot of civic groups and school groups that come out. And I want to commend you on that too because it's a great educational facility out there as well.
Any other comments? Thank you so much. And thank you for the work that's done and for the future that it holds and for the care that it provides for us just to be sensitive to things we didn't even realize that nuances around us that lots of people can learn from. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Just know that we're serving an educational purpose now that maybe we didn't before.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Parks and Recs. All right, the next part. We have the opportunity today to transition an outstanding Commissioner, Scott Franklin, as he has this as his last meeting. And Commissioner Franklin, we have a little, well, perhaps slightly pre-prepared proclamation to read in front of you, with you, if you and I can go out front. And you may want to hold this for any comments you may want to make after the fact as we go forward. So if we can do that, and maybe Amy and your parents could join us up front, that would be great as well. I'll work just a little bit away from the raft to be so that I can take this off and read it because I think it's important that you hear. And if you could keep the mic a little pointed this way, that'll work just fine, just so that you can pick it up. Right, Dave?
Good.
So here's our proclamation. Whereas C. Scott Franklin married Amy Wood Franklin, being an exemplary husband and character building father of Amanda, Will, and Sarah, while also attaining the position as president and CEO of Lanier Upshaw, and then successfully selling that business to BKS Partners. Furthermore, during the challenges of those growing family years, he further assisted his church and community with distinction by serving on several not-for-profits and business-based committees and boards, including becoming president of the Lakeland Rotary Club. If climbing those mountains was not accomplishment enough, Scott has literally climbed the highest mountains on three different continents as well. And whereas Commander Franklin served as a U.S. Naval Aviator with incredible accomplishments during his 26-year career, 14 years on active duty and 12 years in the reserves, in so doing, Commander Franklin flew jets from decks of 13 different aircraft carriers safely executing takeoff and landings nearly 900 times. He deployed to the Mediterranean Sea, Persian Gulf, and North Atlantic, and participated in combat operations in the Gulf, Bosnia, and Kosovo. After September 11th, Commander Franklin returned to active duty with the U.S. Central Command. We thank you, Commander Franklin, for serving our country so professionally with such skilled expertise. And whereas retired Navy Commander Scott Franklin began serving as a city commissioner on January 2nd of 2018, he became the commission's representative on both the Airport Advisory Board and the Sun and Fun Board due to his pilot's knowledge and aeronautical strategic planning capabilities. He will be missed for many reasons, including his expert knowledge as a pilot and patience with fellow commissioners as he clarified aviation terms, acronyms, and issues involving the airport. Beyond the scope of those two municipal boards, he also represented the commission on the Finance Committee, Real Estate and Transportation Committee, and the Utility Committee. And whereas it should be noted that Commissioner Scott Franklin's interest in public service began at Lakeland Senior High School when he participated in the presidential classroom, a then congressman inspired Scott by stating that he or his classmates could become a United States representative. Commissioner Franklin shared this story last month as Congressman-elect Franklin with current high school seniors who may also be motivated to follow his lead in serving their families, their faith, their community, and their country, just as he is doing. And whereas Commissioner Franklin has the cleanest, most organized desk and office of the magnificent seven, and consistently remains cockpit-ready for any city-itchy midget with his incredibly well-groomed hair. And the Lakeland Commission must now find another internal expert on insurance issues because his knowledge and guidance will be noticeably absent. And whereas Commissioner Franklin is always quick to listen, one of the last to speak, and provides insightful questions causing fellow commissioners to think more intentionally throughout deliberations, he has now gained keen insights into understanding how local governance using the public agencies closest to the citizens are best served. These skills were honed by serving Lakeland constituents even on the Downtown Development Authority Board, and in so doing, exceeding citizens' expectations. And whereas through three years of commission experience, Commissioner Franklin is now an expert on local roadways, having benefited from exposure to the incredible Polk County Transportation Planning Organization, he will use these recent gains in proficiencies to enhance America's federal highway system. And whereas Commissioner Franklin will heretofore be known as an almost one-termer, having only recently discovered where his parking spot was, and will now leverage his city of Lakeland commissioner experience to become even more effectively deployed through wise federal advocacy as our representative-elect to the United States House of Representatives. Representative-elect Franklin sets a high bar for other interested commissioners to follow him, considering the leap from Lakeland City Hall to the United States Capitol, if called. Now, therefore, I H. William West, the sentence you were waiting for, mayor of the city of Lakeland, on behalf of a grateful community, do at this moment, with all present, both physically and virtually, publicly recognized, Representative-elect C. Scott Franklin, with this accommodation, as we join this public acclaim in celebrating the distinguished career and honorable service of your excellent servant leadership and the significant life accomplishments. The commission urges all citizens to applaud him as we commemorate this transition from a local role and transfer it to the one forthcoming. As a body, we wish every happiness, effectiveness, and prosperity in those imminent pursuits. In witness thereof, I appear to set my seal and cause my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Lakeland to be affixed this 21st day of December 2020.
Very nice. That's very well written. Thank you very much. It's been a tremendous privilege, really an honor, to serve these past three years. I'm sorry, Stephanie, I have my back to you. But this has been really one of the greatest experiences I've ever had. I love Lakeland. That's why I wanted to get involved with the commission to start with. But if anything, the depth of my commitment and passion for this community has only grown. And, you know, three years ago, as the mayor and Commissioner Madden and I were joining the commission, we had just gone through a ballot referendum on the Strong Mayor Initiative. And at the time, I believed strongly, I was opposed to that because I've always felt that, that a body of educated, informed people can collaborate and make better decisions together. And now, having served for these last three years, I think if anything, it's only reinforced that thought. This is a tremendous group. I have great respect for each of you here. Sorry, Commissioner Walker's gone today. And I just, I love what local government can do. It's really been a privilege. I tell people, as I've been up in Washington doing orientation, what I'm going to miss about the city commission is we can talk about things on Friday, vote on them on Monday, and then watch them happen on Tuesday. And that's just not going to happen anymore at the federal level. But it does take that engaged group of citizens, and I've been a privilege to be a part of that. But I would just really urge everyone out there, whether it's, you know, serving on the commission or on our boards and committees, you know, one thing that has, it's concerned me at times and has others of us on the commission is we have planning boards and different committees that struggle at times to get volunteers willing to serve. And I can tell you, these are extremely important committees to the life of our community. And they, they're important. And we really need folks who are willing to do that. So for those who have done it, I applaud you. If it's something that you've kicked around and thought, maybe I should do it, I'd say, if not now, when? And it really does make a difference. But I'm eager to go on and serve at the next, at this next level and try to do some things to take care of our community back home. And probably one of the best things that there's a real silver lining in all this is I can finally hang out with all my friends and talk to them again and not be bound by the sunshine laws like I have been. But thank you all very much. It's been a great privilege. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Have a nice flight. All the Commissioners helped to build that proclamation. Just for the record, Commissioner Walker, who could not be present, asked me then add this addendum, if I could. "It has been a pleasure to serve with you the past three years here in our community Lakeland. As you come on the commission, I thought of you as, as you came on the commission, I thought of you as the replacement for former Commissioner Edie Yates, who was our finance go-to person. Thank you for the support given, serving together. I enjoyed the very first time we had together with one of our neighborhood cleanups as I really got to see you in action. It was a warm Saturday morning, but you were there to make sure we made a difference in that particular area. All the best as you become our congressional representative supporting the many concerns of our nation, but more importantly, our district area, District 15. May God continue to bless you and Amy as you head to Washington, D.C. I look to see you in March 2021 if the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference takes place where we meet with our congressional delegation." takes place where we meet with our Congressional delegation. Maybe it will be virtual. Have a blessed Christmas. And in addition to these comments to Commissioner Franklin's farewell comments, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a blessed 2021 from Commissioner Walker. So I'll hand that to you as well. All right, thank you, sir. We really do look so forward to seeing how you're going to serve, and it's going to be exciting to watch.
I guess I'm my replacement.
Yes. Well, no, no, we're talking about your service now. And of course, we have Commissioner Selvage filling in in between you as our swing Commissioner and does just a fabulous job in that role. Well, that brings us to our committee reports and related items, and the first report will be from our Real Estate and Transportation Committee Chairman, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Hello, can anyone hear me okay? Good. The Real Estate and Transportation Committee met via go-to meeting. Commissioner Bill Reed chair. Commissioner Franklin, Walker members were present along with Mayor Fruteam, Scott Franklin, Commissioner Madden, Commissioner McCauley, McLeod, all present as well as staff. Commissioner Reed called the meeting to order at 8:00 a.m. First order of business was a lease with Well Done Development LLC for 114 East Parker Street. On June 2018, Well Done Events submitted a formal letter of intent to the CRA Advisory Board with revised proposal, under revised proposal, Well Done Events proposed a master tenant for the property with the property being used for office and collaborative workspace as well as for provisional educational-focused resources for small businesses. The CRA Advisory Board granted approval for the basic improvements for the renovation of a budget not to exceed $350,000 and authorized lease negotiations with Well Done Events. On September 2019, after working with Furman Wegman Banks Architect to estimate the true cost of the project, the CRA staff determined that given the required site work, extensive renovation, and based upon the recent CRA owned property renovations, it would be better to pursue a new building, a new build project. The CRA Advisory Board directed the staff to issue invitations to bid for a new build project and to draft a lease agreement with Well Done Development LLC, Dr. Brisbane's former legal entity. The CRA worked with Furman, with Furman Wegman to prepare construction bid documents for the construction of a new office building of approximately 4,700 square feet at 114 Parker Street. The work would be performed by general contractor and include required site work, parking improvements, and hearing the requests at November 5th, 2020 meeting. The CRA Advisory Board voted unanimously to approve the recommended of the award of the bid to Middle Construction Management LLC and the associated funds for the project of $1,313,000, which represents construction costs plus an additional 15% contingency and award the bid to the subject of the separate agenda items on the agenda. Dr. Brisbane on behalf of Well Done Development LLC and CRA staff have negotiated a lease of 114 East Parker Street, including the new office building to be constructed thereon and upon the following material terms. Number one, the three-year lease initiated term with an automatic three-year renewal term thereafter unless either party provision, provided notices of renewal at least 120 days prior to expiration of the initial term. Number two, the initial lease will be commencing upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy of the new building. No lease payments will be due the first year of the initial term. The base rent will be $18,800 annually based on $4 per square foot of the building space being, beginning year two for the initial term, increasing each year thereafter by two and a half percent. Leasees responsibilities for liability insurance, utilities, and all applicable properties and sales and use taxes. Leaseor shall maintain the repairs of property and the leasees' costs. Leasees shall have the right to first right of refusal of property, to purchase property at any time during the initial renewal term of the lease. Staff recommended the City Commission, acting as the city's Community Redevelopment Agency, approve the lease agreement with the Well Done Development LLC and authorize the appropriate CRA officials to execute the agreement with approval of the lease agreement being conditioned upon and awarded the bid to construction of the new office building being separately on the agenda. The committee discussed several items. Number one, the viability of the business master tenant. Number two, the overall cost of $1.3 million on the project, the lease rate of $4 per square feet being well below the $16 per square foot of market rate. These good deals are not sustainable by the CRA. The CRA has benefited the property tax similar to other nonprofit properties returned to the tax rolls. The use fits within the small area plan. The CRA's investment in these blighted areas is good to get properties back on the tax rolls. The CRA would not participate in the profit of sublease by the master tenant, similar to the collective and the adjacent apartments. The leasee would need city consent for a sublease. The CRA is striking the balance between beautification and generational, the support of tenants from the neighboring neighborhood community, especially entrepreneurs who did not feel comfortable at the catapult, and the catapult was not self-sustainable. City's investments helped other businesses feel safer investing in the area. Discussion was important for transparency to the general public, and the CRA would be mindful of public dollars when it came time to sell the property. The action City Commissioner Phil Walker moved to approve the recommendation seconded by Commissioner Franklin. The motion carried two to one with Bill Reed voting nay. The second order of business was the land lease between Varner Aviation Group, Inc. This proposed land lease with Varner Aviation Group was for one year on one acre of personal land in the southeast corner of the airport. Varner was a business that specialized in restoration and maintenance, repair, and conditioning evaluation of aircrafts, helicopters made in Eastern Europe and Russia. Varner also provides technical support, training, and supplies part 21/2021. The lease contained two additional 10-year renewal options upon the same terms and conditions provided by Varner, provided they were not in default. Pursuant to the lease, Varner rent commencement shall be the earlier of January 1, 2022 or upon issuance of a certificate of access within a 12-month base on the rent being $10,890 per year for the lease premises for the initial 12-month period. Rents are subject to an increase at the expiration of each one-year period by the annual percentile change of the Consumer Price Index prior to the commencement, prior to the commencement of year 21 during the initial lease term. The commencement of any renewal term exercised, Varner's base rent shall be adjusted to the higher of 10% of the appraisal of the unimproved premises, land only, or the rent based upon the annual CPI increase. The staff recommended the City Commission approve the lease for Varner and authorize the appropriate city officials to finalize and execute the lease consistent with the above specified terms. The committee discussed the hangar structure, which will be approximately 9,500 square feet. The action Commissioner Franklin moved to approve the recommendation. Commissioner seconded the motion and carried unanimously. Excuse me, this is a long, long thing today. The third item is a lease with Central Florida Aircraft Service LLC. The proposed lease with Central Florida LLC Aircraft Service LLC, Central Florida, was for a hangar and office space located at 3904 Aerodrive on the north side of the airport. Central Florida, a business specializing in aircraft maintenance and service, was seeking to lease approximately 10,200 square feet of office and hangar space at the airport. The owner of Central Florida was a graduate of the Central Florida Aerospace, which is one of the aviation groups programs offered at the airport. The proposed lease was for one period, one-year period, commenced in January 1, 2021 and containing five additional one-year options to renew mutually written agreement by the parties. Central Florida payment on base rent for the first year will commence February 1, 2021 and will be $55,200 per year. Rent based for the renewal options commits in January 2023 thereafter will be subject to an increase of $2,500 per year. The staff recommended the City Commission approve the lease for Central Florida and authorize the appropriate city officials to finalize and execute the lease consistent with the above specified terms. The committee discussed with the AP shop, it would work with small aircraft. The owner was Mr. Cole Harris, a graduate of Central Florida Aero Academy. This was the first business to be derived from that school, and this is an incredible success story, which the city should be highlight, that they pay a high salary and were a homegrown business. Commissioner Walker moved to approve the recommendation Commissioner Franklin seconded, and the motion carried unanimously. The last order of business was a lease agreement, a second amendment to the lease with Lance Aviation, Inc. This lease from recent with Lance Aviation was for a hangar and office space located at 3131 Flightline Drive on the south side of the airport. Lance Aviation has been operating at the airport for over 20 years, providing aviation maintenance and services for planes, planes, and helicopters. Lance Aviation, Inc., currently leases, lease expires in December 31, 2020. This second amendment sought to establish a new initial 10-year term with the commencement date of January 1, 2021. Lance Aviation was presently lease-based for the first and third floors of Flightline Facility, which consists of 7,759 square feet of office and hangar space. However, Lance Aviation no longer requires the office space on the third floor consisting of 1,112 square feet. As such, this second lease amendment moved the third, removed the third-floor lease office space from the lease premises, leaving Lance Aviation with a total of 6,647 square feet of hangar and office space. Due to the decrease in lease base, base rent will be $4,127.40 per month or $49,528.88 per year effective January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. Thereafter, base rent will be subject to an annual increase in the Consumer Price Index not to exceed 3% in any one year. All other terms and conditions of the existing lease agreement shall remain in full force and effect. Staff recommended the City Commission approve the second amendment to the lease agreement with Lance Aviation and authorize the appropriate city staff to finalize and execute all corresponding and documents consistent with the specified terms. Commissioner Franklin moved to approve the recommendation. Commissioner Walker seconded, and the motion carried unanimously. Our meeting adjourned at 8:40 a.m., which is probably the longest meeting we've ever had.
It was. You had great discussion though during that meeting, I can tell you that, on all of these issues. So are you making a recommendation? Is there a motion to do this as a whole, or would you like to parse them out?
Your leisure.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
As a group?
As a group.
And is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner McLeod. Discussion by Commissioners. A little more brief than Friday's. But there was great discussion, and I thought, well-executed points on each one of those things that...
One thing I may bring up there again, if we may, on the Well Done. I don't really know, I own commercial buildings, and I, my tenants that are in place, I don't make them pay a fee to hold up, have a first right of refusal. Again, if we want to remove that component from the lease, again, she would have that money to grow somewhere as opposed to sitting in somebody else's bank. If she really has opportunity to acquire that property, then she'll have, she'll have more money to buy it with, in my opinion. So that's totally up to them, but I don't think they modify it later now, but that's just a suggestion.
And we have Elise Stromgo, who's going to comment on that.
Good afternoon, Elise Stromgo, CRA Manager, for the record. Commissioner, we've already written this lease up with the city attorney, so if, I think if you would like to change that, I think we're able to do so, and Dr. Brisbane would probably be thankful that we would be releasing her of that obligation to put up $50,000 to secure that right. So I would defer to Palmer, to the city attorney, if we need to do that here or if we could just rewrite that away from...
I would have to pause and remove either all or make that optional.
Can I make that motion?
Well, you can amend this motion, yes, if it's in agreement.
I would like to amend the motion with the Well Done LLC that we negate that $50,000 being put forth as a option payment. Again, hopefully with the hopes that she would grow that money where she needs to, she gets the opportunity to acquire it in years to come, that it would have grown at that point.
All you're missing is the Santa outfit.
Second.
Well, I think they both agreed, the motion and so, and the second, so we're good.
Oh, I see.
All right. I'll make that motion.
All right, very good. That's, it's been accepted. You have it.
We got a second, Bill.
Yeah, you have it. We're good. So now, the next question is, is there any other discussion by Commissioners? Commissioner Franklin?
I just have one other comment before Gene sneaks out there, and we had talked about it the other day, but I think, you know, the Central Florida Aircraft Services, that's just such a phenomenal success story, that's been years in the making, but that we have businesses now being started up and run by people who got that education right there at the airfield, at the aerospace academy, is just fantastic. And these are the kinds of jobs that we struggle to attract to the community to begin with, and we're creating them right there at the airfield. Those types of businesses, like the cluster, and a lot of airports will tend to build a cluster of those. I'd love for us to figure out how we can market this, because the hardest problem businesses like that have is finding the qualified airframe and power plant mechanics, and we're creating them right there on our field. But it's just a tremendous opportunity that I'd love to see us expand on as we go forward.
Absolutely. I'm sure he agrees, but I think he can augment some of their thoughts.
And Gene, what's the average wage for an AMP licensed mechanic?
And what is AMP against, Scott?
Aircraft and power plant. Gene Conrad, Airport Director, good afternoon, appreciate the comments. You know, this is a success story. I mean, this is what we have been, where I've been here, it'll be 11 years next month, so 11 years still here. You know, but it's been something, obviously, but Sun 'n Fun's been working on since the Central Florida Aerospace Academy started back in 2009, the school was built in 2011. And, you know, we have the Lakeland Arrow Club, obviously Sun 'n Fun and ACE and all the educational components that are happening out there. You know, one thing is, when I talk to various, you know, trade organizations in the aviation industry, you know, everybody talks about sustainability and being green, and we have solar farms and we're all for it, right? When we talk about sustainability at the airports, about sustaining our industry, because as we've talked about over the last several years, there still is a pilot shortage, even with the pandemic and everything that's going on, and aircraft, you know, mechanic shortage, air traffic controller shortage, we just need people in our industry, and we're very fortunate. There is no other, there are no other programs like we have on our airport in the United States of America, and if we're going to make a dent, you know, even, you know, post-COVID in this industry to keep it going, you would essentially have to take our program, have it in five airports in every state in the country, just to make a dent, to make sure we have those qualified individuals. But these are high-scale, high-wage jobs. I will tell you, we're not creating enough, because even if you look at Draken, for example, they went from 50 employees about a year and a half ago, they're now at 173, they're going to 250, and they need AMP mechanics. And Travis is working hard at it as well with the Career College, but we need more just for our airport, not let alone all the other airports in our county and then obviously in the country. So it's a cool thing, it's awesome, and we're super supportive of Cole, and we're going to help him along, make sure, you know, he's successful. So thank you for that.
He has a 21-page lease that he has to sign, I thought...
And I will tell you, he was, he combed through it. He came in, he had all these questions, and we answered him for him, and he knows what he's doing, so, you know, hopefully most success to him.
That's excellent. Any other comments by Commissioners or questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Conrad, we appreciate it. Any comments or questions by the audience? Seeing none, it's a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes, congratulations. Pretty awesome. I know you want to clap, you can clap. That's a long haul to get there, so thank you so much, Dr. Brisbane. All right, that then brings us to approval and consent agenda. If there were a motion, that is. Motion to approve. Motion to approve, and a second by Commissioner McCauley. Discussion by Commissioners, that's all the asterisk items. Any discussion by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Also unanimously passes. Then, there are no requests appear from the general public, we have equalization, no equalization hearing, and that brings us to public hearings. And City Attorney Davis, a1. A1.
I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, both A1 and A2 were scheduled for second reading today, but due to a fumble of the notes in the newspaper...
We're going to ask that you continue both of those until the January 4 meeting. I'll go ahead and read the titles into the record, and then after each one, we'd ask the city commission to vote to continue to January 4. That can be, just be done by voice, there's no need for a roll call for continuing. First is Proposed Ordinance Number 20-046, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, approving a conditional use to allow a bar on property located at 124 South Tennessee Avenue. Finding can form here with a comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing an effective date. So I just need a motion to continue that to January...
You want the motion to continue, yes. Commissioner Madden, and second by, oops, second by Commissioner Franklin, and then comment Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to confirm, they've already been acting as a bar, and this is not going to anyway preclude them from operating as a bar throughout the holidays until our next meeting, correct?
Right.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
I think there might be somewhat of a timing issue.
I mean, I'm sure that that was the case, but I would be remiss if I was not absolutely sure.
Any other discussion by commissioners? Any by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Group rolls forward.
And same deal, Proposed Ordinance 20-047, an ordinance relating to the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District, making findings, approving the conclusion of certain lands located within the city of Lakeland within the boundaries of the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Move to continue to 1421.
And a second from Commissioner Reed. A discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Group rolls forward. B1.
Next is a conference of plan amendment, for first, for public hearing, and the appropriate motion after this would be to transmit this to the Department of, the State Department of Economic Opportunity. This is Proposed Ordinance Number 20-045, an ordinance relating to local government comprehensive planning, providing for large-scale amendment number LUL 20-002 to the future land use map of the city of Lakeland, comprehensive plan to change approximately 26.45 acres of residential medium zoning to public buildings, grounds, and it's, not zoning, but land use, to public buildings, grounds, and institutional uses on property located at 2080 Meadowland Park Boulevard, providing an effective date. And I'm not sure if Teresa will be doing a presentation, or we'll just open it up for comments. Teresa, I'm not sure what you... Just open it up for public comments at this point.
Okay, and because there is no motion really from us, desired...
The motion would be to transmit this to the Department of Economic Opportunity for state review.
Okay. Well, so, is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner McLeod, and a second by Commissioner Franklin. All right, discussion by commissioners? We'd love to hear from Ms. Mayo. Okay, so that's our discussion, if we could, and then we'll have a discussion by the audience.
Good afternoon, for the record, Teresa Mayo with Community and Economic Development Department. This is a large-scale land use map amendment for approximately 26 acres located at the northeast quadrant of the Polk Parkway and Lakeland Highlands Road. The purpose of this land use is to allow for a companion zoning change that'll also be coming back to you for a second reading for approval, to allow for a 133-square-foot Veterans Administration clinic on the property. The property is, again, off of Meadowland Park Drive. It would have its primary access off of that roadway, and then a secondary access off of a roadway that would run north-south ultimately on the west side of that facility. The action today, again, is just to transmit the land use request to the Department of Economic Opportunity to allow it to be processed through the state. It would then come back to the city and come to you for a final adoption public hearing.
Right. Any other questions for Ms. Mayo? Commissioner Reed?
Don't they have secondary or third sites selected also?
There are two other sites under consideration that the Government Services Administration is looking at, and my understanding is that the request that was put out by the GSA would be a developer-built facility that would then be leased back to the GSA. Those other two sites, one is in Auburndale, and the other one is located up at Kathleen and I-4, and I believe at this time that all three sites are still under consideration. Even as recent as last Friday, we received correspondence from the GSA notifying us that all three sites had gone through an environmental analysis, and there were no issues with any of the three sites. But this decision is independent of the GSA's decision.
And we heard extensive dialogue on Friday that this was called traffic failures in multiple areas in agile facilities. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, so there is a transportation impact analysis that the developer had prepared, was reviewed by our staff, and found that there are some, there is a segment on Edgewood Drive between Lakeland Highlands and New Jersey that there is a concern about, and in order for concurrency to be met and for those issues to be addressed, any concurrency mitigation would have to include transit, and the conditions in the zoning account for that.
Thank you.
I know, as part of that discussion, too, there was also a request for a workshop just generally to talk about transportation in the area, and I know that the city manager's office did set that up.
Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Teresa. Just a question about when it comes back to us for second reading, if we approve the zoning change and the GSA doesn't select this site, what are the implications there?
Because of the timing, I believe that the GSA will be making a decision in January. I think everyone's hopeful of that, and that seems to be what they've indicated to the different development teams. So if that does happen, we think that the land use is not going to come back to you till middle of January at the earliest, most likely February, so at that time, the applicant could choose to withdraw their request, or they could still proceed with the land use and zoning, and then if at some time, you know, they want to modify that, the property owner wanted to modify that to allow another use, that could occur. But I would think there might be a withdrawal if the site is not selected.
Okay.
Or if they don't have a strong indication that they're still going to be considered.
Right, that makes sense. Thank you.
Is your question also, is it, does it create an unnecessary vulnerability?
I was just curious, if we approved the zoning change, it wasn't selected, I guess, as she said, the applicant can always come back and request an additional change, but just trying to understand that scenario.
Okay.
The land use, at least, would be consistent with the property, because it is owned by the Holloways, and Holloway Park Foundation owns surrounding properties. So public institution wouldn't be, you know, inconsistent with what's surrounding it, but the zoning definitely would be something that if it were approved, they would have to come back and modify.
Commissioner McCarty.
To Commissioner Reed's question about the traffic concurrency and the failure of that section, I thought that Mr. Barnby stated in our agenda study on Friday that that was going to fail regardless of whether this became rezoned or not.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was...
Correct, so we have work to do.
It's failing anyway.
Right, right. And it will fail more later, faster.
We want it to get an A.
Yes, correct. Any other questions, Commissioner Reed?
Again, I completely understand, Palmer, if we approve this, this doesn't really authorize the zoning. Is that a fair statement? This just gives us, that gives them the right to transmit and say that this gives them an opportunity, that we're willing to agree, to listen to what they have to say in the future, should they pick this site.
That's correct, this is not a final action by any means.
This makes...
Again, I don't want to set the precedent, when we set a zoning, then when we can't deny it, because the zoning's in place, or something like that. Of course, if a road's failing, I just like, I don't know if, just don't want to jump deeper into the pond of hot water, you know?
Sure.
But, uh, but thank you for that.
Any other commissioner comments? Any comments by the audience? Yes, please state your name, sir.
For purposes of your record, my name is Tim Campbell, Clark Campbell Lancaster and Munson, 500 South Florida Avenue. I apologize for my dress, but I was just retained today. As a result of your agenda study session and some of the comments, as you can imagine, the applicant has some concern and wanted to make sure that we were addressing you and any of the issues that were raised. I can tell you a couple of things, it's only a two-story facility, it's an inpatient clinic, an outpatient clinic, so it's not a hospital, it's not for overnight stays, the Veterans Administration is not the applicant, they're not the property owner, this is a private developer seeking land use and zoning rights under your comprehensive plan and your land development code, and so that's how it has to be analyzed. And so a comparison of where the VA should select a site is not an appropriate consideration in these zoning matters. It's, and you know what, I don't know that any of us know exactly what the VA is doing, but my understanding is of those three, there are two remaining. And so, none of us can determine where that's going to be or what it is. I think we want to, would be interested in making sure that it stays in the city of Lakeland. With respect to traffic, and Commissioner McCarty stated it, this is very similar, you know, Orlando Health came in, they have traffic impacts, Chuck Barnby and your city staff does an excellent job of making sure that traffic impacts are addressed. There are mitigation factors, including what Ms. Mayo just spoke about, the transit that happens throughout the city of how you mitigate and you deal with traffic, but you're very wise to understand that that corridor is only going to get more busy, and that you look at it more globally. But with respect to this application and request, it will be looked at just like any other case and any other applicant is. I will tell you from my experience that should the VA not select this site, and you have already experienced the fact that with the elimination of the certificate of need, there is a strong interest for additional health facilities in our city, and I would tell you that should the VA not select that site, there's not a lack of persons who are interested in that site, so that actually this land use and zoning could go on, notwithstanding the current applicant, if they were replaced by another. So this is just, just wanted to introduce that we are representing them, they are making the requests, they understand all the factors that they need to address, and we'll look forward to addressing you as this moves forward, and I stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Madden?
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the things that we talked about on Friday was, you know, certainly if the road is going to fail anyway, and there is so much, you know, land ripe for development in that area, it's incumbent upon us to figure out how to be able to develop that land long-term anyway. I mean, I think saying no to projects is not what we are about, you know, we want to make sure that we get the infrastructure to suit the needs of developers in that area, absolutely, and I think it would be, we asked for the policy workshop to also discover if certain applicants or certain uses even open us up for different priority with regard to FDOT's financing of our roads. So certainly if you say no to development, I don't think that that makes it a heightened priority to FDOT, because they just see the farmland and don't think we need to have investment. I think when they see development is when actually that brings attention, you know, to particular areas and hopefully gets us a little higher. You know, certainly I'm not the expert, but I'm hopeful that that's the case, because we do want to anticipate growth and are pro-growth, but we do want also make sure that we have the ability to get to and from the buildings that we build, you know, and not get stuck in a traffic jam. So, you know, hopefully that was understood, you know, if you did listen to our Friday conversations, that, you know, this is a high-priority area for us to be able to figure this out, because it's not like it's already dense and it's already, you know, there's no growth opportunities there, there's a lot of opportunity for growth in that area. And so I think that, you know, I speak for my colleagues to say that we really do want to figure out how to make traffic work and not just say no to development, so.
Thank you, and I did listen, and that was a very good discussion. I'll tell you, I don't know if you know or if it matters, but if, you know, the initial parcel on, the available parcel adjacent to yours, wastewater treatment facility or spray field facility, is owned by Florida Southern College, you've seen the field there. The property between that and the new self-storage facility that is going to be on the corner is owned by Southeastern University, so that has already been conveyed. The parcels that the Holloways own, you know, there's Sams, there's the self-storage, this site, there aren't that many additional sites that are going to be available for development there. And then your site south of the Parkway, Orlando Health will be, has already staked their claim. So when you go through all those things and you look at all those sites, there's actually less future developable land than you think, although they're all claimed for, and that development's going to happen, so it's wise of you to kind of be thinking of the future of how to address those things. So thank you very much for that.
And furthermore, if you think about the client being the veteran, the accessibility from the Polk Parkway makes the regional access very good as well.
I think that was part of the VA's criteria, they wanted to be near a roadway that allowed for that type of access for veterans to come to the facility.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. And Tim, maybe you can enlighten us, there again, once we have a failing road, basically we have to impose a self-mortarium. We can't, we, once the road is F, even F-road, we're not allowed to develop any wide area.
Well, you heard Teresa explain to you, there are mechanisms that, and transportation planning that deal with that. So she talked about, it's happened on Harden with Drummond, we did those types of things. When you did Lakeside Village, you had some of those same issues. So you have, you have additional transit opportunities, multimodal opportunities to move people, the same thing will happen here, and there are ways within the code and within the ITE code, and Chuck would tell you all those things, and I'm sure he will as you move forward with this, but there are ways to deal with it, that while the road is at that point, there are ways to deal with it without just shutting down development.
Does this mean they're going to have to use a, like you're calling it a quagmire there? Is that, that's a fair statement also, isn't it?
I wouldn't say it's a fair statement. I drive it every, most mornings as I leave South McKeel and head into downtown, so it is something, it is an opportunity for improvement, yes it is.
Yes.
I would think if we were going to do something like that, we would really need a little public input from, and I know we will be, but there again, I just didn't want to give them the false expectations, again, I'm really not for this personally, and I'll vote as such, but...
This fostered this where we could.
Right.
You know, and that's really what we're talking about.
Yeah, we, that's what I was going to say, if I may, we just, we can't have further discussion if we don't transmit this to DOE, so this allows us to have that debate.
Any other comments by commissioners? Any comments, Commissioner McCarty?
Just really quick on the transportation side of it, and with Orlando Regional Health, just to reference that, that was one of my hesitations with ORH, but I think that the VA is something that Polk County needs so desperately that I can, you know, coalesce around a little bit more knowledge as we move through this, just because I think for the whole county of that position of being right off the Polk Parkway and the accessibility, and if we can encourage more people to use public transit, I'm all game for that as well. So that, I want to hear more about it, but I think, that's why I brought up the point about the failing road, you know, right, that it fails now, so I don't think we can hinder development, we just have to be thoughtful and hopefully work with DOT on expanding 98 and some other avenues and arteries to make it a little more accessible.
And if you think about this proposed use as opposed to others, if it were a commercial retail site at that location, more of your traffic would come to and from downtown, whereas where it's a more regionally-serving Veterans Administration outpatient center, the Polk County Parkway is going to be utilized more for ingress and egress to this site than going through downtown. So I imagine that the transportation analysis will show the trip distribution being more favored to the Parkway for people coming in throughout the county. But all of that will be part of what will be submitted during this process.
Very good. Any other comments by the audience? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying, actually, we need to do this as a roll call, shouldn't we?
Just to transmit, can this be a voice vote?
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
No.
One opposition, Commissioner Reed. Okay. All right, that brings us then to C1.
C1 is Proposed Resolution Number 20-053, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida elected to utilize the uniform method of collecting non-abhorrent assessments as authorized under Section 197.3632 Florida statutes for collecting all unpaid demolition and lock-clearing non-abhorrent special assessments levied by the City Commission during calendar year 2020 and preceding years, adopting findings of fact stating the need for the levy of said assessments, providing for the mailing of this resolution, providing an effective date.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Franklin, second by Commissioner McCarty. This is done annually?
Yes, this is the first of two steps you have to take in order to get all those different special assessments on the tax roll next year.
All right. Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion by the audience? This is a roll call vote, Commissioner McCarty.
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes. Oh, wait, I didn't provide for any audience, did I?
Yes, you did.
I did, okay, double-checking my mind. All right, then that brings us then to Community Redevelopment Agency and Item A.[1764.83] All right, then that brings us then to Community Redevelopment Agency and Item A.
And we just asked that you adjourn the City Commission convene as CRA.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, that's correct. Anytime we do CRA business, we have to cease meeting as a commission and become a CRA board instead. And so we cease now meeting as a commission and become a Community Redevelopment Agency. All right, that brings us to Point A.
Okay, this is related to the item on the Real Estate and Transportation Committee relating to 114 East Parker Street. This is the award of the bid for the construction of that new office building at that location. There were a number of bids received as a result of an invitation to bid issued by the city's purchasing department. We've just listed the four lowest bids, and you can see that the lowest bid was $1,105,975. And then the fourth lowest bid was $1,110,665. Based on that range of bids, the city's local purchasing preference policy took effect and is being recommended that this award be made to the low local bidder, which is Miller Construction Management out of Lakeland in the amount of $1,108,230. This was recommended unanimously by the CRA Advisory Board for approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Commissioner MacLeod, and a second by Commissioner Franklin. You're weighing in heavily on this, meaning this is good, sir. You had a good discussion on this, I thought, with respect to the local bid preference at work. And this is a great case in point of that. Discussion by commissioners. Any other? Commissioner McCarty?
Just with regard to the local preference, I think one of the overarching things, just for the public to understand that this commission is working toward, is helping the backbone of economic development here in the county, or here in Lakeland, and making sure that we have opportunities for our residents and our businesses here so that we can provide a space for them to work within and that we're fair to external candidates and external bidders. But I think for, when we tie in education like the aerospace center out at the airport, this is one more piece to that puzzle. That the more we can do that, that's more jobs for our community and more support. So I know that there might be some external folks that may not like our vendor preference, but I'm glad that we move forward with that, and I'm glad to see a local company receive the bid this time.
And it's in very specified ranges that people can see in advance, and so they can know it in advance as you go along. The negative of that is you might have some people that don't tend to want to bid over time. But on the other hand, you can look at these bids, they're all very, very close. Commissioner Frank, Matt, and then Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. I also do want to note that, you know, when we were in the CRA meeting, if you notice, Strickland Construction and Miller were both local, very tight, you know, very close bids. And at first blush, the bid price did come up a little lower with Strickland on the first bid. But then there was an ask to go back and do some value engineering. And then that second bid resulted in Miller being the final, you know, lowest bid. So I did, you know, want to say that, you know, even if some of our outside folks who bid, you know, did not participate, we do still have a lot of local groups who are, you know, competing against each other. So it's still a really competitive market and, you know. So I just wanted to kind of give that extra detail about the discussion. If you did look at the initial bid price and then the second bid, that was based on the value engineering.
Very good. Any other comments by commissioners? Any comments by the public at all? No, Commissioner Reed, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right, that's all right. There again, you know, I had looked at these numbers initially, and of course, when I looked at the other bids, they seemed all in line. And I did speak to our local contractor about some different costs in reference to the site work. And after speaking with him, he assured me that these numbers were aligned because of the, more or less the site work. The overall project is going to be over a million three, where his bid is around a million eight thousand, hundred and eight thousand, something like that. But I'm glad that the local preference is working, and especially in an instance that's close. So I like keeping our local employers busy, especially with city work.
Excellent. Thank you very, very much. All right, any other comments by the public on this? This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. All right, very good. We cease meeting as a Community Redevelopment Agency and now reconvene as a commission. And although there are no items under City Manager, there is one verbal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just do have the one verbal this afternoon. I'm very pleased to announce to the City Commission today and to the public that your water utility is the proud recipient of the 2020 Water Conservation Award for Excellence, Best in Class, from the Florida section of the American Water Works Association. We want to give special recognition to Julie Vogel for compiling all the required information and submitting the application and for utilizing seven wetlands to talk about all things water and to Roughen Gray for leading our conservation group and tracking much of the required data. This is truly a utility-wide effort, and we couldn't achieve water conservation without the commitment of our customers. So we want to congratulate the City of Lakeland Water Utility, and we want to thank our customers for all of the conservation efforts.
Give them a round of applause.
And then finally, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to wish the mayor and the commission and to our citizens and customers, and especially to our City of Lakeland employees, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You likewise, sir. All right, bringing us back to City Attorney for first readings.
I have one ordinance for first reading. This will come back after we get the state's comments on the land use amendment that you just heard earlier on the agenda related to the Veterans Medical Clinic. This is Proposed Ordinance Number 20-048, An Ordinance Relating to Zoning, Adopting Findings, Providing for PUD Planning and Development Zoning to Allow a 133,000-square-foot Veterans Administration Medical Clinic on approximately 26.45 acres located at 2080 Meadowland Park Boulevard, Providing for Urban Special Purpose, Context District on the property, Finding Conformity with the Conferent's Plan, Providing an Effective Date. So no actions required on that at this time. That will come back with the land use amendment after that's reviewed by the state. Under resolutions, we have Proposed Resolution Number 20-054, A Resolution Relating to Public Utility Easements, Making Findings Vacating an Existing Public Utility Easement Located at 2750 Skyview Drive, Providing for Severability, Providing an Effective Date.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Need to approve. Second.
In a second, okay. By Commissioner Franklin. And a very close third by Commissioner Madden. Discussion by commissioners. Commissioner Reed?
You're going to, is this, is this the map of the easement?
Yes.
Is that on the bottom of the page? Is that sort of?
Yeah, we added the map. Hopefully you have that in front of you. It's right adjacent to that very large undeveloped property off of Skyview Drive. I think it goes all the way to Crystal Lake Drive.
The whole square, or was it just a?
Well, there's, the easement's not on that whole property. And it actually goes slightly off of that property to the west as well. But, you know, that gives you a general orientation of where this is. But our utilities, when they reviewed this to determine whether we could vacate it, looked at the actual specific legal description of the easement and determined that they don't have any facilities in there. So they had no objection.
Is the church using those utilities?
No, we don't have facilities there, so there's no objection.
Okay.
Any other questions by commissioners? Commissioner Franklin?
Almar, do you know what's going on on that lot? I drove by there just the other day, and it's all cleared. Like somebody's about to put something up pretty big. It's a pretty sizable lot.
I've called the owner, he didn't call me back.
What's that?
I've called the owner, he didn't call me back.
All right, does that create a complication?
No.
No, okay, all right. Any other comments by commissioners? Any comments by the public? All right, this is a roll call vote, so we'll go Commissioner McCarty.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Yes, aye.
All right, so unanimously passes. We'll go the other way twice. Sorry. That brings us back to Missalani's reports, Item C1.
Yes, we have a Second Amendment to the Fuel Maintenance and Operation Agreement with Shelter Air Lakeland LLC. I think Ramona's 100% that one.
And we talked about leaving this on so that people could be aware of the work that's done on this behalf.
Good afternoon, Ramona Siriani for the City Attorney's Office. Yes, this is a Second Amendment to the Fuel Maintenance, Operation, and Management Agreement that we have with Shelter Air. Shelter Air is one of our FBOs that has been operating out of the airport since 2014. And this amendment seeks to modify the method of reporting and remitting the payments for the fuel that Shelter Air disperses. Currently Shelter Air's fee for the fuel tanks, it's calculated at the time it's actually delivered to Shelter Air. And this amendment seeks to change that to calculate the fees at the time the fuel is actually dispersed into an aircraft or sold. And it also helps further identify the fees that are actually charged with regard to Amazon's operations since they began out at the airport. And lastly, it also includes a provision in the amendment that in the event that Shelter Air doesn't operate as the fixed base operator providing services to Amazon, that they would be obligated to pay the airport a $3,500 per month charge for their expansion tanks. And all other terms and conditions would remain the same, and this would have a retroactive effective date of December 1st, 2020, subject to your approval.
Questions or comments by commissioners? Commissioner Franklin?
Oh, well.
Okay, Commissioner McCarty?
I was just going to ask Mr. Conrad to give us the numbers that he shared during agenda study the other day about how much this brings into the community and stays here, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good afternoon again, Gene Conrad, Airport Director. And we had talked about on Friday, I brought the report for November as far as the fuel. And before I give the numbers for November, annually, we pump about 1.3 million gallons on the airport pre-Amazon. Now that they are operating in November, we did 976,000 gallons just in November.
A month.
Avgas, which is what's in the single-engine aircraft out there, was about 20,000 gallons. Jet A, which is like what NOAA pumps and all the other jets that come and go from the airports, about 121,000 gallons. And Amazon was 834,000 gallons. So that's, I guess, the total for the fuel flowage for the airport was $43,942 for the month. So the base tenants, all the people coming and going pay eight and a half, or pay eight and a half cents per gallon. Amazon pays about three and a half cents per gallon. Obviously, theirs is lower just because the volume is so large.
Thank you.
Commissioner Franklin?
As we were commenting the other day, that's, that's the sound of, you know, fuel being turned into noise is also the cash register ringing. So that's a pretty big deal. In addition, all those jobs Amazon's providing.
Well, and then you also have the ground lease, which is about $80,000 a month. And then also the landing fees, which are averaging anywhere from $35,000 to $40,000 a month as well, just for the aircraft to touchdown on the runway.
It's a big deal.
This is an educational question. Do we receive that fuel off of the pipeline?
No, that fuel comes via trucks. So for that amount of fuel, it's about 133 tankers a month is what's coming in and out. So it's about four, a little over four a day is what's coming and going from there.
Every day?
Every day. But the pipeline is just north of.
I know, of I-4. And I was just wondering if that was.
Maybe one day it'll come right to the airport, but right now.
That pipeline supplies fuel to Orlando International?
That's correct.
So if you are not aware of that, there's a pipeline that the jet fuel is pumped from Tampa Bay to Orlando International Airport, and it goes along I-4. And many times as we're doing approvals, we run into that as a consideration. But I was, I didn't know if we had ever had a takeoff from that, so.
There's been discussion, but I think we're ways out from that. It's pretty expensive to get the pipe.
Other questions?
That's the same pipeline too, and we talked about the interchange at 33.
Yes.
It's so expensive to move, it's that fuel pipeline.
Correct.
Gene, you had mentioned NOAA. Didn't I just see that they've received another new aircraft?
Yeah, so we're doing their expansion out there. Actually, we're going to get ready to finish up here at the end of January. They just received a new King Air. It's about 11.2-ish million dollars. And then they also have a G550, which is coming, it's in upwards of over $100 million for that airplane. They're generally cheaper, but it's just all the instrumentation and all the equipment that goes inside of those scientific aircraft, so pretty cool stuff.
A King Air is 11 million.
That's, this one is. Or just.
It's special.
Yeah. A lot of equipment.
All right, Commissioner Reed?
Gene, exactly where's our, the fuel trucks come in from the east and go west?
The fuel trucks?
Right.
Oh, they're coming out of the Port of Tampa.
No, okay, but where do they enter the airport? Let me rephrase my question. Where do they enter the, where's our fuel farm exactly?
So we have a north side fuel farm, so they're entering right there where the roundabout is going next to the Hoagland Inn. And then they enter from the south side over by Polk State College Aerospace and the new KTTW hangar. So they're split up.
Those fuel lines are connected or those are separate access?
Tanks are connected. North side are connected, south side's connected, but.
But not to each other?
No, sir. And then Shelter Air has, they've purchased at about $400,000 a pop, three 10,000-gallon Jet A trucks. So they now have about 37,000 gallons of rolling, what we call rolling stock at the airport now.
And how much fuel per plane on a 37?
It depends. A 767-300, if it's going nonstop to Europe, which it doesn't, can take about 16,500 gallons. And a 737, I would say takes anywhere between 3,500 and 5,000 gallons.
All right, makes me feel better at the gas pump, you know, personally.
It's a lot of gas to get you back.
Yes, it is. All right, any other comments by commissioners or questions for Mr. Conrad? Any by the audience? All right, this is a, I'm sorry.
This is a voice vote.
Voice vote. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
I have the motion.
I don't think we made a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Move to approve.
Second.
There was no motion. I apologize. Thank you very much. I'm way off now, so you made a motion.
We jumped into comments. Commissioner McCarty made the motion.
Approve.
Okay, in a second, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes.
Next, we have a report relating to fair housing impediments within the City of Lakeland that is required as a condition of receiving community development block grants and federal home funds relating to housing. I believe either someone from the Housing Division or Central Florida Regional Planning Council will be presenting a brief report.
Good afternoon. Annie Gibson, Housing Program Supervisor with Planning and Housing Division. As part of our process for our five-year consolidated plan, we have to do an analysis of impediments to fair housing. So this afternoon, we have the latest here from Central Florida Planning. They've been making a presentation of our process and give you the results of that report. And at the end of the report, we would like, of course, your comments, and then we would like your approval to submit the report to HUD before December 3rd to 1st.
Very good.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Jennifer Cotto Salisbury with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. And also here today is Stephanie von Poleski-Bush. As Annie said, we'll give a brief overview of the report. As Annie stated, it's completed every five years, and it reviews the demographics of the community, current policies, and also community input. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, individuals with disability, and family status. As we look at the demographics of the city, about 41% of the population is paying rent or mortgage that absorbs 30% or more of their income annually. And it's recommended nationally that we are at 30% or less. So we have about 41% of our population higher than that. This also reviews city programs, housing assistance programs, which include the owner occupied rehabilitation and repairs, home purchase assistance, rental construction, homeownership new construction, waivers or reimbursements for nonutility impact fees, discounted lots, and rental and mortgage assistance. Again, and these are all programs that can be accessed through the city. So a big part of this study also included a community survey. And we had this distributed online and also paper copies. And we sent out a postcard with information about the survey. And the city was very helpful with social media outlets as well. We received 171 responses. And we just have a brief summary of that survey. When folks were asked about the availability of affordable housing in the community, 65% said there are limited options, more is needed. 17%, there's no option or availability. And 18% said there are lots of options. When assessing or accessing affordable housing, folks noted that limited availability was one of the greatest challenges, finding something that met their income levels. Also, that what rated high was financing and mortgage assistance. Folks noted that they needed additional assistance, and then the concentration of subsidized housing in low-income areas. There was also a place for folks to write comments. And folks had commented, income to housing is a cost challenge. ADA, accessible housing is also a challenge. Folks noted discrimination against pet owners, high rent with a security deposit, and then cost of living gentrification. And then there were other comments that Lakeland is an affordable community. The survey also asked, have you or someone you know experienced? The survey also asked, have you or someone you know experienced discrimination? 56% said no. 27% said yes, and 17% did not know. The follow-up question to that was, who, who was discriminating? And the comments came back, landowner, property manager, real estate agent, mortgage lender, mortgage insurer. Then the subsequent question to that was, if you feel you were discriminated, on what basis were you discriminated? 29% said race. 14% said color. 18% said religion. And if you believed that you were discriminated against, did you report the incident? The majority of respondents said no, and 33% said, I don't believe it makes a difference if I did report it. We had 18% who had noted they felt like they had not been discriminated against. One of the final questions was, are you aware of the requirements of the Fair Housing Act? The majority, or, basically, the majority had said, no, not at all. And 37% said somewhat, and 22% said they were very familiar with the act. Additional comments that were received, prices are too high, more affordable housing units are needed, more affordable housing is needed for the elderly, need additional assistance from the housing authority, need funds to help rehab, rehab existing homes, and then the need for having jobs closer to housing. So overall, the findings, this is a longer report, there's a lot of data within it. Again, this is a summary, but the findings indicate that homeownership rates are lower for African-American and Hispanic households than white households. There's a need for greater education and outreach regarding the housing assistance programs and fair housing. And also, a lot of folks don't have regular access to the internet. There's a lot of good information on the internet, it's just getting folks to, to that information. And then the cost of transportation related to housing, getting to your job. Also, many people are having difficulty maintaining acceptable credit ratings. Both the county and the city offer rehabilitation programs, but there is a waiting list. And then also, lack of information regarding housing assistance programs and lack of affordable units are barriers for very low, low and moderate income residents. So actions to address impediments, many of these actions listed say continue, because the city has identified over the years, action steps, and many of these would be continued. But one is to expand education and outreach regarding fair housing and discrimination reporting, and also expanding the information about the housing assistance programs, continuing to enhance coordination with the community partners, and also continuing to address the need for rental subsidies and financing mechanisms. A lot of this information is also based on a meeting with our partners, other housing partners, and also a community workshop. Additional actions to address impediments, including continuing to provide homebuyer education, addressing the relationship of transportation to affordable housing, and continuing to work through land development regulations, much of which the city and the review of current policies has done over the years, including accessory dwelling units, locating transit closer to housing, and a number of other things. And that is our overview today, and again, this kicks off the city's consolidated plan update. And I'm available for any questions.
So any questions? Commissioner McCrory.
Jennifer, thank you. Thank you for the work. Being on the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, I've gotten to see how involved you all are and throughout the region, and is there anything in these findings in the survey that stood out to you that you didn't expect, or is it all tracking with kind of the things that we know that what we're hearing is a commission?
I would say it's, it's tracking with probably what you already were aware of. With COVID-19, a lot of numbers are pre-COVID-19. We're still seeing the results of that. I think you'll probably see more foreclosures and other information like that, but I don't think there's anything new here that you probably weren't already aware of. But I would say that, looking at the city's past actions and policies, this has definitely been a priority for the city through the policies you are working to implement.
If you were looking at something that could be the biggest crux focal point we should change or address, excuse me, what would it be?
I would say that through the, the actions that are listed, continuing education and outreach on the programs that are available, but also what the Fair Housing Act is, and getting that information out to folks that it's illegal for discrimination against all of those factors. But we're now faced with an even more challenging environment going forward, and that's a really good question.
So education is certainly one of those components, and then making sure we don't have discrimination. Commissioner Reed.
I have a question of Teresa. How many, how many homes are being built by Jeff Bagman, that group, on our vacant lots? Are we, are we moving forward with, about how many homes do they build?
So Keystone is not the recipient of any of those infill lots for which we issued the request for applications from builders. So there's about 66 lots that were made available, and the housing staff is in the process of finalizing the policies to be able to enter into contracts with those purchasers that were selected. That process got a little delayed with their focus on the COVID funds and having to expend those funds. So now that we're reaching one of the milestones with that funding, being the 30th of December, they're going to be able to, again, turn their focus towards that lot list. And again, the, the intent is to get those contracts executed early 2021.
Are we going to try to focus on different groups? Because I know some builders would like to have four, or five, or six in the same group where they can get economy of scale, per se.
Right, so we actually had a good response to the request, and a lot of the builders wanted some of the same lots, just because of location. They were more desirable lots to build on. So we went through a ranking of the builders, and then, following that ranking, looked at what number they were asking for, and so number one would, would get the, you know, if they asked for 10, they would get their preferred 10, and then whatever was left over would then go to the subsequent builders on the list.
But then available, that list is available today?
Thank you, ma'am.
Who was selected, yes.
Of the lots.
Yes, so we do have a list of those builders that were selected and the, the lots that they, that they prefer to receive.
So if you're not a selected builder, you can't build on those lots?
On the, the initial offering of 66, no. But we expect that we are going to continue to add to that list as properties come available. You know, CRA oftentimes will acquire properties, and we had some properties that were not on that initial list that we hope to add to it, so there will be a, a second application cycle this coming year.
What would be a criteria that would eliminate a builder from that?
We looked at affordability, that was one of the big ones. So what the cost was for them to construct a structure, and then what the sales price would be. We looked at their past experience in building affordable houses specifically, so not just a, a builder, or production builder, or market rate builder, but someone that was focused in on affordable housing units. I'd say those were the two, the two key things that we looked at. We also looked at the design of the structures, whether or not they contain two or three bedrooms. There was a whole range of criteria, but I would say the affordability, the financial resources of the builder was another one that was taken into consideration.
Any other comments by commissioners for questions?
And to, to follow up on the question about the greatest need going forward out of this survey and the education piece, one of the things that became evident in the one public forum that was held virtually is people just continued to say, well, we don't know where the resources are. And so internally, we've already talked about trying to compile a list of those resources. But then again, with not everyone having internet access, it's something that we really need to work towards making available, not only on the internet, but, you know, as, as clients call into the various housing offices, so whether it's the county or, you know, City of Lakeland, we have one consolidated list with all of the resources.
Good. Good plan. Right, then we would need a motion to approve the.
Move to approve the memo.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Reed. Discussion by commissioners?
One quick amendment to that. Would that go to 211 and United Way? Like, would that list be provided to them, maybe? Sorry, Teresa.
I'm going to look to Annie on that, because she deals quite a bit with, like, the homeless coalition and making referrals when clients call in. She knows where to direct them based on their needs, so, Annie, if you want to answer that question about United Way.
I am sure that they do have a list, but it's not as consolidated probably as it could be.
Right.
Okay, there are several even locations with the state throughout ship office, and they also offer a list of programs that the local governments offer.
I was just thinking, that's such a quick number for people to remember, for all of us even, and speaking to others about, you know, the 211 for different assistance services, and if they had access to the completed inventory that you guys do, that it might be helpful.
All right, any other comments? All right, any comments from the audience at all on this?
I'm going to put on a different hat than usual. I have the pleasure of serving as the chairman of the board of United Way, and we will certainly pass that along, so that information can be included on the 211 information and the data. Thank you very much.
Excellent, excellent suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
And we've got to take it off our things-to-do list, so that's very nice. Any other comments by the audience? All right, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Also unanimously passes. We have no report from the Finance Director. We, that brings us to utility, A1 ordinances.
One utility-related ordinance for first reading. This will come back for public hearing on January 4th. That's proposed ordinance number 20-049, an ordinance relating to the electric utility, providing rates for miscellaneous fees and charges, amending ordinance 5736, revising miscellaneous fees and charges related to cut-on service fees, service charges for smart meter reads, and establishing administrative fees for smart meter reads, providing definitions, making findings, providing for severability, providing an effective date. Once again, that will come back on January 4th for second reading and public comment.
All right, any questions on that at all? That brings us to the audience portion of our median, of our meeting. So are there any audience comments? If so, please come forward and state your name.
Sure.
No, right here. Yeah. You're at the right spot, sir.
Yeah, you got me the right way. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. My name's Tim Seko. I work for Lakeland Electric. I've been there about 20 years. I'm also the president of the Utility Workers Local 604. I represent the Lakeland Electric and Water Utilities. On December 14th, 2020, 11 days before Christmas, Joel Ivey announced to the employees at the power plant that he'll be shutting down Unit 3 on March 31st, 2020, and there'll be layoffs. Even though he has a right to do this, we have an agreement we signed nine months ago concerning this shutdown that Joel is not honoring. I would like to ask, are we ready for that loss, for, for the loss of that many megawatts? The reason I'm asking this is because I'm not sure you're aware of what's going on with the other units we will be relying on for electric generation when Unit 3 shuts down. There are safety issues with Unit 5, which will be the main unit we will be relying on, and the newest unit Lakeland Electric purchased, MAC GT2. Unit 5 has an issue with the steam turbine blading, that while it is online, it could come apart and cause catastrophic failure, not to mention seriously hurt or even kill someone. We get emails every day as a reminder to stay out of the Unit 5 avoidance zone. Concerning MAC GT2, when it was purchased, Lakeland Electric leadership knew it needed a $5 million hot gas path inspection. Lakeland Electric management decided not to do that hot gas path inspection, and because of that, there are other issues that could be coming up with that unit, which would be costing possibly more than just a $5 million benchmark to get the hot gas path done. And also, our Larson Unit 8 is limited due to some EPA issues and can't operate at full capacity. EPA regulation is, has to do with the lake water there. Unit 3 may be an older unit, requiring some attention, but it is solid. There are no avoidance zones. It's still running and can reach full capacity if needed. We also just got done spending millions of dollars on upgrading the electricity protection out there just recently, just this past spring, we spent $1.6 million on a new electrical upgrade for the cooling tower out there. So with that in mind, I mean, we've put money into it. I mean, maybe we can try to recoup some of that money back. One question I'd like to ask is if we shut down Unit 3 and a catastrophic failure happens to the units we're relying on, what would happen to the electric bills, to the rate payers? I did ask a similar question to that to Mr. Ivey when he made the announcement, and he said it could go up, maybe not. He really couldn't give a straight answer. We were originally told that Unit 3 would shut down in 2024. By that time, some replacement generation would be in place, but it is not in place yet. Because of this, you may be faced with raising taxes and electricity costs in order to keep the city and Lakeland Electric running. And in closing, there's something I'd like you to think about. Is Unit 3 and the employees facing layoffs the real problem, or is the decisions that the leadership of Lakeland Electric making? Thank you for your time, and I wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Seko. Merry Christmas to you, and appreciate your comments. Are there any other comments?
My name is Jason Hagerman, 630 West Patterson. I am the, well, first, I've got two things to address today. The first one is, as I'm sure everyone's aware, we all know in September, Governor DeSantis signed an executive order allowing bars and restaurants to open at a greater capacity while removing local government's ability to enforce their mask requirements on individuals. The order did not, however, exempt businesses, and I hope that you will look to our neighbors in Hillsborough County and in Pinellas County and reinstate a mask mandate. That's all I'll say about that. My next comments are in regards to what's happening in Dixieland. I am the secretary for the Neighborhood Association, and I live on West Patterson Street. Recently, I've been in contact with all of you about a closure of an alleyway in Dixieland. So I want to present to you today, for the public record, the online petition we have. We have over 100 signatures for this petition. So a little history. Dixieland's an historic neighborhood in Lakeland, Florida. It was platted in 1907 and experienced a housing boom in the 1920s. In 1993, it was designated a historic district, and today, there are over 30 buildings that have been determined to be over 100 years old. Over the last 27 years, great care has been taken to preserve Dixieland's historic status. This progress has significantly slowed in recent years, and on November 16th, the city staff took action to erode from our historic districts. Alley's are narrow laneways that typically split residential blocks lengthwise. They are public rights of way that provide secondary vehicular paths behind houses along the block. In the city of Lakeland, most alleyways were laid out as part of historical plats, I'm sorry, historically-platted subdivisions, and are present in all but two of the city's historic districts. Today, there are over 37,000 linear feet, or approximately seven miles of the alleys, in the other five historic districts. Historically, alleys have been regarded as the back-of-the-house spaces for parking, garages, and rear yard access, infrastructure features, and other service-related activities such as garbage pickup. In older residential neighborhoods, these alleys are integral to the physical structure and usage patterns that have evolved over a century. Lakeland was incorporated in 1885. While alleys are regulated by the city's land development code, they should be protected as traditional historic district features and spaces for accessing small-scale infill development and accessory structures. This. development and accessory structures. This is a direct quote from the new Historic Guidelines for Historic Preservation from the final draft dated August 31st of this year. According to the city land development code, section 106-113, alley's are defined as highways, and section 1-2 defines a street as a highway. Eroding the historic district. So, city staff, under the direction of community and economic development, made a determination to close the east end of the alleyway located between West Patterson Street and West Park Street, just east of South New York Avenue. In early November, the alley had been reopened by city staff after an illegal fence encroaching on the alley was removed. The cost associated with improving the unpaved alley is too high to justify at this time, according to city staff. However, there is zero cost associated with leaving the alley open and unpaved, like other alleyways in Dixieland and the city of Lakeland. Also, if cost is at issue, the funds should not have been spent to install several signs related to this closure and the installation of concrete bollards. Since Solid Waste does not use this alley for trash collection, paving the alley is not necessary, according to city staff. However, I would contend that Solid Waste does not use this alley for trash collection because the owner of 114 West Patterson has been allowed to illegally block the alley and prevent the alley from being improved. If the alley were improved, Solid Waste could begin utilizing this alley for, this highway for trash collection. The motoring public has not used the east end of the alley for a number of years, according to city staff. And again, this is correct, only because Ms. Price has been allowed, I'm sorry, the property owner at 114, has been allowed to block this end of the alley and frequently... I'll end there and respect my time. But I will present to you a copy of... Yep, those signatures. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jason. Appreciate your time.
For the record, my name is Michael Stewart. I'm speaking on behalf of shuttering Unit 3 as a concerned retiree with over 30 years with Lakeland Electric at the Macintosh Power Plant and a LE customer. Since Mr. Ivy has been with us, management has run our generation units in the ground with a lack of maintenance. LE has had a catastrophic failure of Unit 2 boiler that had, it had a work order written on it that luckily didn't kill anyone. We've had numerous issues with major equipment on Unit 3, such as the scrubber with severe corrosion, which caused severe SO2 leaks that impacted the workers, Altorax issues, bearing failures, precipitator issues. LE has purchased a supposed barely-used GT that no other utility wanted or was interested in, that needed, ended up needing bearings replaced, and needed a $5 million hot gas path that they knew about, but it was deferred so as to be charged to O and M due to being over budget at the time. My worry is that people will be losing their jobs during a very difficult time. How is this going to affect the pension plan with less employees paying into it? Is there going to be a trickle-down effect with layoffs to other departments in the city like IT, fleet? If we continue to let management make poor decisions and ruin the generation we have left and not build new generation, will we become like other cities that purchase power, and our rates will be one of the highest instead of one of the cheapest in the state, as we have been? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Michael Stewart.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Bobby Mahoney. I'm the director for the Utility Workers Union out of Washington, DC. I represent the workers here for Lakeland Electric and Lakeland Water. We had an agreement that the plant would stay open until 2024 unless there was a catastrophic failure, some unknown circumstance. That didn't happen. I was told by management that they didn't realize that the expense to, if the plant did break, to get rid of the coal would cost them $10 million. So, that wasn't part of our agreement. I'm not gonna sit here and debate with you guys over it. My lawyers already told us, we'll win the case anyway, so we'll let the judge decide that. Why it came all the way down here today was, the way it was done, you don't bring out the people 10 days before Christmas, line them up, tell them you're closing their plant, they're losing their job, especially this year, when this all could have been done after the holiday. They could have brought it up. So they lined up all these people, and they didn't even give us any numbers or names. So no one knows who's safe and who's not. It's not, it's not the way you do things. I've closed coal plants all around this country over the last 20 years, and it's not the way you do it. And when we even sat at the table, where we worried about a catastrophic failure in the closing early, we had conversations that they'd tell us when they've reached this point, we would sit down, we would figure out who's gonna stay, who's gonna go. Do you realize that you've never had a layoff in the city of Lakeland or at Lakeland Electric, Mr. Mayor? And I'm sure you don't want this to be your legacy. There's over 100 people that work for the city that went through the drop and retired, and they've been working here since 2018. 100 people. Also, in that agreement that we negotiated with these people, we had training where they were gonna train everyone. They didn't train anybody since the term of that agreement started. They go, oh, there's plenty of time, don't worry about a thing, oh, we're gonna get to the training. No training. They never honored the training. And then we also had the, where they were gonna get preferred jobs within the city so we could pick them up. If we could make it to 2024, there was only 20 people that were gonna get laid off. Now we're looking at over 60. So we wanted to transition them into other jobs, but they wouldn't take them. And 95% of my members that went and applied for other city jobs, they were turned down where they hired the people off the street ahead of these guys, which is against the thing that we wrote. So I don't understand why you would do it. You know, Joe gave me the old adage that, you know, there's no good time for bad news. Well, I'd like to correct him, there is. He could have waited till after the holiday. He said he wanted to announce it to the Utility Commission on the 4th. The plant is running fine. There's nothing wrong with the plant right now. They have a little participatory trouble because during the last shutdown, someone from management told them to chop it out. We went, I came down here when Keith, Keith Merritt was here, and we gave him over $30, $40 million, which they misspent down the plant, mismanagement and everything. And I asked him, why don't any of the commissioners do their due diligence? Why doesn't someone take a hard look at what's going on down here? And he said, I got three full-time jobs, I got three jobs. I'm only making 60 grand a year, and I don't have time for this kind of stuff. So what we're asking for is, let's do an investigation. Let's have someone, but also, I got a letter from your general counsel that says you guys don't have any authority over this, over this matter, or anything to do. Like I said, I represent these places all around the country, public, private, municipals. Any municipal I know, the elected officials are in charge. Not according to Palmer Davis's letter. I'm sure no one's seen a copy of that either. So I left a copy for you guys to read that. But someone needs to take some action, and we'd like to get rid of the people that have been here who already went through the drop and retired, and see if we can save these people. No one's ever been laid off, Mr. Mayor, and that's gonna be your legacy in this place, as the other two gentlemen testified before me. I respect my time. I'd like to wish you Merry Christmas, but it's not what happened to my people here. They didn't get a Merry Christmas, they got massacred. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Are there any other comments from anyone in the audience?
My name is Sean Hurley. I'm a welder out at the plant, Lakeland Electric plant. I'm gonna be one of the massacred. I'm gonna lose my job. I hired in in December 22nd of 2014, and I've only got six years in. So, next year in August, being that I only have six and a half, seven years in, I'm part of the B plan, so I'm not gonna get my pension because I'm in a 10-year plan. I don't know if there's anything that maybe we can do about that. Maybe there's a way that I can transfer into the C plan so I'm at least vested. I know that our TO is down in the welding shop, down to one. We were thinking it was gonna be maybe three. I was told by the, the plant manager that we no longer need welders out there because Unit 3 is gonna be shutting down. I showed him work orders, about 300 of them, that the welders did in the past year or two, two years. And I informed him that that isn't even Unit 3, and I don't understand why we don't need welders out there. And I asked him, I said, with one welder on that TO, how is, how are you gonna do any welding work that needs to be done? He told me, well, you know, if we have to, we'll bring in contractors. Well, I went to ethics class, I know my city values. I'm a city employee like everybody else here. Matter of fact, I met Joel Ivy about six months after I hired in, and I told my wife, and I said, you know what, that's Joel Ivy right there. I'm sure Joel Ivy remembers that. We're at Shoot Straight, remember that? My wife goes, you know what, go introduce yourself, go say hi. I was so excited to meet Joel Ivy and meet him face-to-face, to find out that he's, he's gonna be one of the people that are gonna help shutting down this plant. I understand it's old, but I don't understand why I'm a city employee and I will not have a job come next August. You know, it affects my family. I'm just one person. There's gonna be over 60 people laid off. Since 1906, no layoffs. It's really affecting our family, especially during Christmas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
My name is Raymond Garnett. I've been at Lakeland Electric for seven years now. I come from Travis Votec and Power Academy. The whole time I've been at Lakeland Electric, I started with 41 years left on my hard hat, and now I'm at 38, you know, and I was an intern for three and a half years. I finally got hired on, and I'm a testament, I did apply for several jobs since, you know, the whole layoff going on, and I've went to jobs and went practice and all that, and it's gone nowhere. Took me 42 jobs to get hired on with Lakeland Electric, the whole time I was intern, and I made it. So, I have applied for jobs since the whole, you know, we're gonna be laid off, and once again, that's it. I've got nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garnett. Any other audience comments? All right, seeing none, this gives us an opportunity for us to be able to comment on anything that you want to bring up before our year ends, as this is our last meeting. And then I have some things that I want to discuss as well. Who would like to begin?
I'll begin, Mr. Mayor. And just to follow up on those comments, I assume the January 4th Utility Committee, that item is on the agenda of Unit 3, right?
Yes.
Okay, just confirming that, that we'll have a chance to walk through that and that. Okay. I, similar to what City Manager Sharal said, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and looking back on this year, what a year for this commission. But, you know, I think we've, we've done a lot of great work, and I'm proud to serve alongside this group. And certainly, Commissioner Franklin, we're going to miss you. I don't know what else I can add that wasn't said in the proclamation, but we will miss your airport expertise, and I don't know who's going to make sure that Gene Conrad isn't pulling a fast one on us, and so that, certainly, you've brought a lot to this body, and I look at just how you approach issues, how strategic and thoughtful you are, and the way you ask questions and make us sharper. We're going to miss that, and you leave big shoes to fill. So, we're cheering you on as you go to Washington and excited to see what happens in that arena. So, we wish you well. But, yeah, that's really all I have today, so Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Ghetto. What else can I add to that?
Commissioner Madden?
I think our colleague said it very nicely. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everyone.
I'll let you go next then.
Merry Christmas to everyone, and thanks to the city, as Commissioner McCloud has just said, what a tumultuous year we've been in, that the city staff's been amazing, keep coming, you know, to work and helping us and helping our community grow and do well in spite of everything else that's going on. I want to say to Commissioner Franklin that we're just ecstatic for you. I've had the privilege of the last 12 years working with not just the local congressman here for District 15, but I've worked with congressmen throughout the state of Florida and actually from many states around the union, just going to congressional classroom and taking our students each year. And although many of them are wonderful public servants and human beings and great leaders, I could not be more proud to have you represent us. I'll get a little teary. Just knowing you and working with you here, I feel like we're in really good hands up there. You're so thoughtful and intentional, as Commissioner McCloud just said, and your, your commitment to your faith and to your community and your family. I mean, I just look up to you and really, you know, admire you and Amy and all that you've built. And I, we got to know each other just a little bit in Leadership Class 6 many moons ago, and that's where our paths crossed. And, and even several years ago, when this seat was open, I think I called you or texted you and said, I think you should run for this. And I wasn't on commission, and you had just started, and you're like, I just started the commission. And I'm like, but you'd be so good at this. So I'm, I'm just real excited to support you and do whatever we can here locally to help you. But also, I'm looking forward to being able to call you and not break sunshine and ask you what your thoughts are and what's going on in the city of Lakeland. So, to the staff, you know, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and Happy Holidays to everyone. And to this body, I've just enjoyed, well, enjoy is a bad term for COVID, but I've really felt very grateful to be participating and working with each of you over this last year when things have been so challenging. And I think that hopefully we're on the upswing if everybody stays safe over the holidays.
Commissioner Franklin.
Well, thank you for all those comments, and it has been a true privilege to work with everyone here. It's been a very difficult year, and it's been interesting to see how everyone has risen to the occasion, and I'm very confident that we have turned the corner on this, and hopefully we'll get these vaccines rolled out, and that, you know, this time next year, as we roll into the new year following that, that it'll be a whole different scene. But anyway, I just, I can't tell you all how much I've appreciated the opportunity. Just to be clear, we have not broken the sunshine up until now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even have.
But we will be able to have those conversations going forward.
I'll be able to ask you questions.
That's, I think, for people who haven't been involved with the commission, that's, that's the hardest thing. That's the biggest eye-opener for me coming in, is just the inability to have any dialogue with your colleagues other than right here. It's very, puts us in a tough position. I understand the need for it, and we need that transparency, but it does certainly add an element of difficulty.
And there's such great respect among commissioners on to do it, which I'm so grateful for. Well, I would echo that as well. My relationships with Scott really began on the, on the business side, and I consider him a wonderful friend, and it's been great to have him as a commissioner, and I am so thankful that DC has you coming, and we have a voice like you have. And so, it's gonna be interesting to see what happens and how you deal with the glacial momentums that exist, but we have to be there. And, you know, there have to be voices of reason, and you can't accomplish it otherwise. I have some business items I want to discuss as well, two of them in particular. As we go into the next phase of our year without Scott and Commissioner Salvage on board, I reassign committees, and so I have done that committee sheet, and you'll get a copy of that, and we'll have some TBAs that actually, I'm leaving some room for the new April Commissioner to fill that might require some other adjustments. I'd like to suggest that Commissioner McCarley be our mayor pro temp, and like you to think about that so that we could, you know, do that vote here or at a future agenda study. But I just think it's nice to be able to shift some of that responsibility among the commission. I want us to really think about COVID. We're watching the COVID numbers very, very hard. We have really, I almost hate to say this, done pretty well, considering the entire Tampa Bay area. We have had not two over 10% days in a row in terms of post Thanksgiving. We need to wear masks. We need to wear masks in stores, and store owners need to continue to mandate masks. None of us like masks. We can move into a stronger position, as you talked about, Jason, with respect to mimicking what Hillsborough County has done, but we have really tried to say, let's make sure we have that problem. So if you look at our availability of hospital beds... So if you look at our availability of hospital beds, it's pretty constant, we have the same vacancy rates, uh, so we have some capacity there. Not that we want to move people to hospital beds, not that we want to react to a rising crisis, but if we can work together to do what we're doing and respect other people and wear masks and, and abide by that so that, um, we're, uh, eliminating it. I have, um, a large family, and we have been, uh, interested that none of our family got COVID, and finally, my Atlanta, I have an Atlanta daughter that got it, and so, um, she's going through that, and she's going to be, by Christmas, by herself, you know, and, which is unfortunate. And it, this affects so many families, so many different ways, uh, we just need to make sure that we're, uh, doing everything that we can. So we want to continue local businesses to, uh, require masks, we want to strongly encourage individuals to wear them for others, and, um, we want to try to avoid having to do anything that is a greater mandate. We have, just so you know, we're looking at the Hillsborough County, um, uh, resolution, and we're looking, and we are lining some of those requirements up in terms of what that would look like if we had to mandate that for businesses, but if we can keep ourselves in that five to ten percent arena and then drop back down to five, uh, after Christmas, that would be a wonderful accomplishment by all, uh, as we go forward. And I certainly can, if, if there are any other commissioners who'd like to comment on the COVID side of that, you, feel free to do that. Anything anybody wants to say? Okay, so that's kind of what we're, we're watching. Merry Christmas to all, Happy Hanukkah or Kwanzaa, whatever it is that, uh, it might be celebrated by you as you go forward. It is a privilege to serve in this city, and it's a privilege to serve with a staff that is as conscientious, uh, as a staff as we are able to work with, uh, as commissioners, and we, um, appreciate the decorum that we have, and I think a lot of people don't necessarily recognize how different that is in some cities than it is here. And it's because of mutual respect and a high ability to listen and, um, uh, less emotional decision-making, and that I am so grateful for, each of you who, um, contribute so well to the conversations that we have, uh, in place. And if, as a final reminder, we're going to take a picture after this meeting that I, maybe I guess that's probably in here, that Liz Hollada is going to do. Is that in here that we're doing this? Yes, for the picture, and, um, it won't have Commissioner Walker in it, but we're going to orchestrate the picture so we add him in on a Photoshop basis. So as we do this, because we do not want a commissioned picture without Commissioner Franklin in it, and that's the purpose of that motivation. So with that, if there are no other comments, our meeting is adjourned. And we're ready for your picture, ma'am. And how are we doing this on the masking basis?